For all of us. I have Friday mornings. Deliver on the way back.
Living the dream. Nightmare.
I haven't, I haven't.
Yeah, yeah.
I haven't been home.
Kayak tomorrow. Started kayaking. Walking and going.
Next time you go, Bob.
Yes, yes. I want to lower this tomorrow. I was, I mean.
Give me something to throw at each other.
And then I want you to go in the other one.
Get some bells.
I'm gonna buy a couple of them. So much fun.
Tubing out there won't like this around because there's so many.
Yeah, it's so much fun.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, everybody can have one.
George's last night. On, over on. Yeah.
Paper, but I still have your pen for some reason. Well, you don't want to lose that pen, I know that.
No, I'm not, let's say. I go to Skinny Alice, I use her kayak.
Hey, Mary, how are you? I haven't seen anybody in. Huh?
How's everybody?
I have two kayaks.
Good evening, Mary Scanlon.
We're not broadcasting what we're doing right now.
House life out Lake Shore. Where's you, how are you?
Mr. Frampton. Think I've doubled the gray. Oh, my hair gets long, you should see. Aaron has an emergency.
Think we vote on one all the way through. One vote.
There he is. Sorry.
I'll sound familiar.
Oh, yeah, no.
Should pop up with a pop-up.
Can't get him.
No.
Wifi?
No. For board docs.
There's no printed ones this week?
Peter Frampton.
No, that's okay, I don't have it, I just didn't know if there was or not, so.
Normally I put one on at home.
No, it's all right, it's just been, it's been.
Peter Frampton, I got all these. Always nodding. Epic album was seventy-six, you were right out of school. Could have been an anthem for your generation.
Well, it was.
That, Free Bird, stuff like that, you know?
Love me. Oh, I guess I am, yeah.
Mess, I have six in everything.
Try to get off. Yeah, she's getting involved. Oh, my God, he's getting involved or something wrong.
Okay, we're gonna, six o'clock, we're gonna call the meeting to order. Please rise for the pledge, everybody did though. Thank you, and welcome back to in-person meeting of the Board of Educ. Arch, isn't it? With a moment of silence for the following. Nancy L. Merriam-Crouse, a graduate of the North Syracuse Central. Marcus Mitchell, a graduate of the North Syracuse. Mary Fortino, a retiree of the North Syracuse Central School District. Robert Zachal, a graduate and retiree of the North Syracuse. Kayla Flansburgh, attended schools. James Simultal, attended schools in the North Syracuse. Claire, a graduate of the North. In this evening with two presentations, our first one is the update on the construction of the Bear Road Elementary Schools, so.
Hello, everyone. Thanks for having us back. Little bit about what's going on now at Bear Road. Backfill tomorrow. Abatement, we're doing final testing. Up. Happened out front. As we go through here. Have some additional abatement in some exterior. Not know was there. Far, we're really. Out of the crawl spacing. Past week, we upped the bus loop over at trans. Parking spots for the bus turnaround. About that this was gonna be enough space. Getting on some feedback from the ex that are for all transportation department found it. Have some concerns, it's pretty tight, they're worried about what. Evaluate those in the coming week. Behind the building, we've got some wetlands work to do. So, right now, the parking lot and the building found is that the swamp is higher than the bottom of that pipe. So. In. Coming up, we're expecting steel now on August seventeenth. Take roughly a week to get the steel up in the front area where the offices were. Before school starts, so it's looking like to happen. Plumbing's being roughed in now. Booked to be here a week after the steel shows up, so. Again, potential roadblocks, impacts of material deliveries due to COVID and shortage of manpower primarily for the Possibilities, thus far, we have not had any problems with material deliveries. Member, like we talked about, we're expecting to have that connecting core. Over at the junior high, we still have some ongoing roofing. Five guys were on site. Fact that this work is gonna be.
Section right along the bottom there.
Section along the bottom is what we're doing, what placing the through-wall flash. Areas we found that there was flashing. Actually installing through-wall flashing in these.
You gotta take the brick out to get in there, yeah.
Some of the deterioration in other Probably holding back. Some other work that we've got coming up, Main Street Playground is due demos day, Wednesday through Friday, that'll be demoed and Bear Road Playground, we've completed. Project itself is gonna be responsible.
An update, like is.
Gillette and Allen Road are both complete, yes.
Safe to say, or?
They were on schedule, I would, I would not say we were well ahead of schedule, just because arrived in July, and we were.
Once things get moving and you have year, are we limited to crew that can come in due to the?
No. No, we're able to get enough people in to do the work.
I know some places they, they can only have like, you know, plumbers in. Some places I'm aware of, not schools, but.
What was the delay with steel?
Was it, delay was really in the submittal process, it just took Part of that was because they modeled every.
Amazon was consuming more than.
Thank you. Very much. Okay, next we have update on our reentry.
Good evening. Most of you have seen the news almost every single day. According to every single channel, we are working on our reentry plans, every superintendent in our area and in New York State has until July thirty-first to put a plan together for reentry. The timeline that we're using right now is we have five subcommittees that are working on different areas in order to help us submit the plan. On July sixteenth, we received a final guidance document of one hundred and forty-five pages from State Ed. And we've poured through that, that was this past Thursday. And we've been working diligently, but a survey did go out to parents Friday. And we've had the highest response from any survey so far. I believe it was about forty-two hundred responses already to the survey that was sent out on Friday. And July thirty-first, we will have to have a plan submitted to the state. And in the first week of August, the governor said he will be making a determination as far as will we be coming back to school in person? There are some key areas that are part of the plan that has to be submitted. Number one, health checks have to occur on every single student. So, part of our, our study is looking at the best way to go about doing that. Social distancing is emphasized, and so we must have a plan to maximize that for everyone in the building. How we manage students that are ill or anyone that is ill also has to be part of the plan. Again, reinforcing health and hygiene, part of the things that we need to do is we must be training and instructing people how to make sure they're adhering to hygiene and cleanliness issues. Other big area is face coverings and PPE as far as what's the requirements for students or people that are entering the building? And what we're doing to clean and disinfect on a regular basis. One of the things that is being emphasized in this plan that there was not an emphasis on when we left into the spring is attendance. So, we did realize that there were times where students were not always engaged. We have to make sure and ensure that we are connecting with all students. And the middle portion there, it talks about attendance for instructional purposes. We are responsible for developing a mechanism to collect and report daily teacher-student engagement. So, that's a piece that is a little bit different than what was specified the last time Along with that is chronic absenteeism. So, one of the things that you've seen reports from our buildings that if students are chronically absent or we have a building that has many students that are chronically absent, our schools are looked at in how we have to deal with that. So, that is a critical thing that we need to ensure. If we do go to a distance learning at any time, that the students are engaged and they're not allowed to just kind of not, not tap in. One of the key elements, we'll be monitoring our special education. And the consideration for in-person services is a priority, especially for high-need students. Says, and preschool students with disabilities whenever possible. Another focal area will be our bilingual students and how we are communicating and connecting with them in whatever model that we choose, but they are a priority as well in the state document. So, they finally opened the portal for us to take a look and submit the plans. Again, we will have to do that by July thirty-first. One of the things that we're trying to share information, the superintendents who have been meeting weekly since March are now meeting twice a week so that we can kind of collaborate and not reinvent the wheel all by ourselves. So, we're going to be placed into groups that are by size in our next meeting. So, North Syracuse, Liverpool, West Jenny, Beeville, FM will be part of a group so that the plans that we're developing, we are sharing similar information. So, that's, that's an overview, a broad overview, it is not detailed because the work is still being done and being reviewed. But as we are working on those plans, we are checking with the people on the committee. We're trying to make sure we're vetting the information, looking at any and all possible solutions in order to meet everyone's needs. Questions?
I have a few. When you're meeting with the other schools, meeting, it's not just superintendent?
At this point, at this point, it is just superintendents. We did have a meeting two weeks ago where we brought constituents from the district, whether it be building administration, people that work in, as either nurses. We probably had at least eight to ten other individuals in a Zoom meeting that had about one hundred and twenty-nine people on it to try to brainstorm. But now we've gone back to mainly just the superintendents. Um, no, that hasn't been in person as of yet.
You referenced the Department of Health guidance and I'm confused because I've read a couple, we had guidance from SED, we had guidance from Department of Health, we had some differences in those two.
And, and they're constantly going back and forth because sometimes you'll see something that says must or should. And when we have those discrepancies, we often ask our regional BOSI's interim superintendent to get clarification and they, they do. So, we've had a number of different revisions of just snippets, and then we also vet that with legal.
So, at the end of the day, we, we developing our own plan based on these guidelines. Obviously, we're not reinventing the wheel, you mentioned that, because we have Makes sense to collaborate, but at the end of the day, it's submitted governor or the state ed?
Um, state ed would
Governor makes a decision, I know.
State ed would be putting their rubber stamp on the plan. Doesn't go to the governor, it goes into the state ed portal.
I'm not trying to be a pain and start trouble, but what's, where does a county executive have a role? Because he made a comment today, and I'm, I get troubled by all the comments I hear when I know we're in the very, you know, still other, there's so many moving parts. Out there making statements, I think he made a Something to that effect. County executive made a statement.
So, I, I didn't hear the statement today. I do know that we did have a meeting with the county executive this past Friday, it was a, a phone conference and all the superintendents were on that conference. But again, we're looking at what we can actually do according to the guidance document. And pouring through the guidance document, we sat down as a cabinet and we went through, again, the key elements of the one hundred and forty-five page document. Some of the bigger challenges that we face will be things such as transportation. And I'll say the, the temperature checks are the two that stick out because every single student, as they're entering the building or prior to, we have to ensure that we've done a temperature check. So, we So, we, we've had some dialogue about that, and as we're getting with the subcommittees, we're, we're going to explore any and all options as far as the temperature checks.
So, the timelines here, I mean, you're, you're gonna have a plan by the end of this We come back and meet again on the tenth? No, by that time, obviously, the governor is saying he'll make a decision by that time. But will we know if our plan is?
Well, I think with the, the plans that we submit, there is a whole list of assurances saying that the district is assuring they're doing X, Y, and Z. The eventual plan, the details of the plans will be on links that are submitted and attached to each one of our buildings. I don't think they're going to be checking the actual, not checking, certifying the actual plan. They're certifying that we've submitted and we are guaranteeing that we are assuring these things will be occurring. So, they'll be at least approving that portion at that time. Because with seven hundred school districts, there's no way they can, they can do that in, in that short timeframe.
I don't mean to go on, but then now that leads to other questions in my mind, but some of those are may or may not be addressed in the federal piece of legislation where fight over holding harmless. Guess we don't know the answer then.
We, we don't know the answer, I would assume they would have to.
I, I appreciate the work you're doing, I do want you to know that, I, we've talked and I know this is just I want to call it impossible, but when you, when we look at it, it's just.
So, I, I want to make sure that we're clear, there are a little over a hundred people on all of these committees. So, there are many people in the system working hard, continuing to have Zoom meetings, collaborating, talking, investigating, we've looked at other states' plans, we're looking at materials. So, there is a lot of time and effort that's been going on with many people throughout the organization. So, the people that are on the committees are really doing some great work.
Discussion and some statistics out there about parents who are still afraid to send their kids back to school and some discussion of a hybrid in-person. Stay at home, which actually may. Help with numbers. That part of the discussion of the committees. That hybrid.
Yes, it is. We're going to be working on three options. One is full back to school. The second would be a hybrid, partial virtual versus part in school. And then the third that we have to submit would be if we were totally virtual. So yes, to answer your question, the hybrid will be part of our plan.
Everybody else who's working on this. Board of Education Committee reports, I don't believe anything new.
Wait, I do.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So, sorry. Thank you for confidence in me asking. And we do have a couple policies that require us to meet this summer. So Connie's going to be sending out two potential dates to the. You know, everyone's availability and what works best for them. Vote or, you know, put something together for a. Yes.
Brett Superintendent's comments, you're back.
Well, the first comment is, again, there's a lot of work, work, working on these reentry plans. But I had the, the wonderful opportunity to tour some of our facilities this past week. And I want to commend Matt Irwin and his crew that worked on our fields and our facilities. So for a few years now, we've had some areas of concern at our Gillette Road complex. And Don and myself, Mr. Bednarzki, Mr. Rockwell, Mary Beebe, we toured the facilities with Matt Irwin and his crew. And I have to tell you, they've done just a remarkable job in doing repair work and doing some things to help facilitate the proper growth of grass and, and runoff to the point where I know Mr. Rockwell then sent out a notice to all of his boosters regarding the work. And Mary Beebe told us, she goes, we can play on this right now. So they were very pleased with the work that's being done. So I wanted to publicly recognize Matt and his crew. And also that a lot of work has gone into trying to get these fields to, back to the caliber that we want them to be.
Okay. Any other Board of Education comments? I get a motion for A, the consideration of approval of the minutes of the. Board motion from Terry, second. Discussion on those minutes. None, all in favor, can do a real hand raise. Pose that is carried. Motion to put Beebe for us, please, for the consideration of classification of placement of preschool table suit, motion from George, seconded by Terry, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor. A motion, please, to put item C in front of us, business office reports for May 2020. Motion from Mr. Marizio, second from Terry. Motion. Seeing none, all in favor. Pose that is carried and please, motion to put D, the consideration of contract award for us, motion from Mr. Harrington, second. Marizio, any questions? Noted that I'd, I'd probably, only had one.
One bid?
They also have that same question. Not a lot of water, cooling tower service entities out there, yeah. A heat exchange device? Not like nine-mile cooling towers. Okay, that's the only cooling tower I was familiar with, that's what I was picturing. So what happens when we only get one, we're only required to put the bid out, correct? And then? Right. Well, it's important to know, thank you.
Where do the bids go? I mean, so all the potential contractors, okay.
Any other, any other comment? Favor bid? Motion, please, for the appointment of the 2021 Board of Education. Harrington, any discussion? I, I'll just say that I, when we, when the names came in from Ms. And Mr. Marizio and I discussed him and, and able to get everybody. Thank you for being a free agent, I hope you're happy with where you appointed, but that helps a lot, the flexibility.
Thought maybe it might.
Think he might like legislative, he's got a great chair. He stepped it up from the previous chair, I can tell you that much. Any other statements besides mine, I guess?
I'm just happy to see everyone.
Any other comments? None, all in favor? Carried. Motion, please, to put B before us, creation of a 1.0. Central CNS High School for Special Education. Arrived in the Friday letter also, any discuss. None, all in favor? And a motion to put surplus of marketable, non-marketable goods before. Allen?
I made a comment last month and I want to thank Greg Stone for typing it out so I could read it and understand what each one is. So I thank you to him for doing that.
Non-marketable math manipulative.
Bet I'm not teaching anymore. I would be there.
Again, when we can move, move things and have people utilize them, we do. And so one of the groups that is taking a look at the non-marketable is St. Margaret's. The principal is coming over and taking a look at if there are any things there that they can use. And so we've already set some things aside for them.
Thank you, any other comments? None, all in favor? Pose that is carried. Motion, please, for personnel report A to place that before.
Thanks on there.
Oh, oh, I know who that is, yes, he was on national news. Really? Oh, wow, I did not, I did not make that connection.
Kids and people.
Favor? That is carried and a mo. Like, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Pose that is carried and a motion, please, put item C administrative report, motion from Mr. Crabtree, second from Mr. Marizio. Discussion, all in favor? Pose that is carried. At this time, make a motion to move into executive session for the purpose of receiving update on negotiations with the teacher targeting unit. If I could get a second, please, second from. Favor? Carried, and I'm sorry, no action to follow. A motion, please, for the meeting adjournment. Motion. No discussion on that, all in favor? Pose, we are adjourned, thank you very much.
No, we're going to stay here. Terry, we're going to stay here.
That's right, we can't. Did your grant feed him to get the sneaker?
Yeah, it's one-on-one. Really does try to, he lets some of the kids go through, but if you dribble past him and make a basket. The pro he's hooked up with.